I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now officially calls meeting in order at 7:01 PM, September 13th, year 2021. Take the roll call, please. Okay?
You just call out our names?
Yeah.
Here.
Mr. Kmet?
Here.
Mr. Adjigal?
Here.
Mr. Franklin?
Here.
Mr. Nix is not with us this evening. And Mr. Day, I'm here. All right, now moving to public comment. It's a public comment. This time is reserved for members of the audience to comment on subject matters that are not on the agenda, but are with the jurisdiction of the Lemoore Planning Commission. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes per person. The commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters that are not on the agenda. Any handouts for the commission shall be provided to the Planning Commission Secretary for distribution to the commission and appropriate staff. So are there any further comments at this time?
My first time. Brian Custodial, Gary Burrows Incorporated. So, off topic. A lot of things are good, envious, and well-minded. But too much of one thing is not a good thing. I'll give you an example about Tulare. We have businesses in Tulare, too. In Tulare, there's ordinance that says you can't have gas stations, no more than two to a four-corner station. For obvious reasons, right? Not against these guys or anything like that, because they're good people or whoever they are, Johnny Quick. But there is three-on-one corner out there dividing the pie. Then you go out to the sewer farm, and between the sewer farm and the skunks, you have a valuation of property. And I own a bunch of property. And I don't like that. At all, period, end of discussion. Have major businesses in your town. And that's all well and good if things go good. But the accountability and maybe some of the ideas coming forth may be very Christmas-like right now, but in the near future, say five, 10 years from now, may have detrimental effects. So it'd be my thought that you guys engage in how much of one thing that we're gonna have. Capitalism, I believe in, so you can't stop it in some respects. I just think that sometimes you can get too much of a good thing, and then it's not really that good a thing. You see it by movements of town displacement. What used to be the center is now the blithe. The blithe is now looking for different things to come in it because everything moved because it got overpopulated in one area. Blah, blah, blah. So my thoughts are this, is that if you could look at things with an open view of saying, how much of this stuff do we have? How much do we need? What's what fits the city's deals? And how does it affect other players in the city? Players, I'm not talking like one, twos, threes, I'm topping top ones, top twos. We've had several incidences where we're not real happy. So as you can see, I'm here at a meeting that I never come to. And I will be discussing further as we go along each individual situation on the public hearing, because I have more than three minutes there. Anyway, thanks.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Seeing none? Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of August 9th, 2021. Has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Commissioner Adjigal?
Hi.
Mr. Franklin?
Hi.
Mr. Burr?
Hi.
Mr. Kmet?
Hi.
I vote aye as well.
Mr. Chair, can I make one comment?
Yes, sir.
We're doing roll call. You omitted that maybe I missed it, but Mr. Mead is not here. For the record.
Yeah, for the record, can the record reflect also that Commissioner Mead was absent as well? All right, item five, public hearing. So this item pertains to a conditional use permit, number 2021-03, finding of public convenience or necessity, a request by Beal Properties, Johnny Quick, to allow for off-site sale of alcoholic beverages at 10 North Bellhaven Drive in the city of Lemoore, APN 023-470-0124.
Good evening, Chairman and Commission. Steve Brandt, City Planner. This item is, as you said, is a conditional use permit and a request for a finding of public convenience and necessity. This is the the site is at the northeast corner of Bush Street and Bellhaven. You will recall at your April Planning Commission meeting, you approved a conditional use permit and a site plan review for a gas station mini-march and a drive-through car wash at this location. What you did not approve at that time was the use permit to sell alcoholic beverages from the site, and so the applicant has come back and asked for that additional conditional use permit, which also needs a finding of public convenience and or necessity. The request is, or the applicant is applying for a type 20 ABC license, which is would allow the off-site consumption of or sale of beer and wine only for off-site consumption. That's what the type 20 license is for. You'll recall, you reviewed another conditional use permit for alcohol sales recently, and that there are distance requirements and buffers in the zoning ordinance for schools, churches, parks. None of those facilities are within 500 feet of this site, so we don't need to make any special findings for that. So really, the the only question is whether you believe there's a public necessity or convenience needed. We've reviewed the, or the city manager, police chief, community director, all recommending that that finding be made. So really, this is this is a follow-up to the approval in May to allow the convenience store, which is still on track to to be built, to be able to sell alcohol from the mini-march. So staff's recommended approval. There's some conditions. The standard conditions that we would put on alcohol sales CUPs. Open for any questions.
Any questions from the commission at this time? Right.
Sure.
I'm guessing that being as that public necessity or convenience is lumped together as one, this would be more convenience as opposed to necessity, right?
Yeah, that's just what they, that's what the state calls it. It's 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 because the state looks at how many permits, ABC permits, they've already allowed in certain census tracts. And once, once it goes over a certain number, then they want the local jurisdiction to specifically state, yes, we we want this. And so that's what the public necessity or convenience is basically saying is is that is that the local agency is telling ABC, yes, we specifically are okay with more permits in this area.
And then the second question. Has ABC expressed any concerns about granting this type of permit to this entity?
No. No, they usually don't talk to us directly. They they wait for us, or they wait for you to make your decision. And then once we, when we forward that on to ABC, then then they finish their process.
Any other questions from the commission?
Mr. Vice Chair, if I might add, in addition to Mr. Brandt's comments regarding the public convenience and necessity, it is a turn of art that's you, term of art that's used in this context for ABC licenses. Effectively, it means that the Planning Commission has taken appropriate review of the application, the site, and other circumstances, and determined that it's in the public interest or for the public benefit in order to approve this. If you're able to make that finding based on your own personal judgment and discretion, then you can then you can support a finding of public convenience or necessity.
Thank you. And being as if this item is under a public hearing, I will open this item up for public hearing at 7:12. So is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this particular item?
Hi, my name is Trevor Beal. I work for Beal Properties. And thank you, commissioners, for giving us the opportunity to come here and hopefully become a part of your community and your business community. I just wanted to share a few things with you regarding our operation and maybe alleviate some of your hesitancies or concerns that you may have with a convenience store and gas station. So I would like to first off, let you know that I completely disagree that we are a convenience store and gas station. We are an economic engine at this location. We'll have not just convenience items and fuel. We will have multiple eatery options and not just your standard 7-Eleven-type store. We have multiple brands that we operate, and we employ eager and passionate people to help guide them on a course to career development within our company. We founded for many years and operated the Johnny Quick Food Stores throughout the Central Valley. And though this location is going to be branded a little bit different than Johnny Quick, we're actually in the midst of a rebrand of, where we're calling it Day and Night Markets. It's a name that some of you might recognize from years back. Day and Night was a previous brand that the founders of our company operated in the 70s, and it's a chain and name that we are going to continue to expand throughout the valley area from Los Banos to Bakersfield. But I just want to make sure that I make it clear to the commissioners here that this location is going to be so much more than your typical convenience store or gas station. At this location, you'll enter and you'll feel more like a cafe or restaurant style of business. One of the biggest differentiating factors to the store will be our Rare Earth Coffee Shop and drive-through. So me and my dad actually founded Rare Earth Coffee in 2014, and now we have eight locations throughout the Fresno area. We roast and pack all of our coffee locally in Clovis and distribute to locations as far north as Modesto, all the way down to Viselea and Hanford. Collectively, we expect this location to employ 20 to 30 people when it's fully operational. These are jobs that, contrary to most people's opinion or professional thought, pay above minimum wage, offer bonus opportunities, and career advancement and professional development workshops for our staff. We are not absentee owners. Corporate representative, whether it's myself or our marketing rep, who's in attendance tonight, will visit the store three times per week, just as we do with all of our company-operated stores in the Fresno, greater Fresno area. We also have, we also hold all staff meetings bi-weekly at each location to review our service and our overall operation. We're committed to providing the best service you can find at any store. Cleanly stores, restrooms available 24/7, offering specialty and healthy snacks, and really being able to grow our community ties. Beal Properties, Day and Night Markets, and Rare Earth Coffee are excited to become a part of your guys' community. And we politely ask you to approve our conditional use permit in order to allow us to offer these services in the community and create more economic opportunity for the citizens of Lemoore. So if you have any questions for me about our operation or anything that we're planning at the location, I'd love to answer them for you. But that's what I'd like you guys to know.
Okay, I got a question. The coffee shop, that's where you're gonna be selling alcohol to?
No, no. It, the alcohol is only in the convenience store area. The coffee shop is kind of a section inside of the store, so no alcohol is is sold at the coffee shop.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I think so. Just so everybody knows, the type 20 ABC license is for off-site consumption only. That means you go in, buy it, and take it home.
Yeah, it's not a bar.
Right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from the public? All right, seeing none, so I will close this public hearing at 7:17. Bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
Well, I just think, you know, this has already been the original conditional use permit has already been accepted. We're to the point now where this store, if it didn't sell alcohol, wouldn't wouldn't fit in with everybody else, and I don't think it would be fair if we were to block that at all, so. So I don't have a problem with it at all.
All right, so if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2013, approving conditional use permit number 2021-03 in accordance with the findings and conditions in the resolution.
I'll second the motion.
Right. So I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Adjigal?
Hi.
Mr. Franklin?
Hi.
Mr. Burr?
Hi.
Mr. Kmet?
Hi.
I vote aye as well. Motion passes. All right, so item six, this is a report of recommendation. A request by Daily Homes to extend approval of tentative subdivision map number 2018-01, tract 793, and accompanying entitlements for one year. This project proposes to divide 17.87 acres into 30 single-family lots, 12 multifamily lots, and remainder located at the northeast corner of Highway 198 and Highway 141 in the city of Lemoore, APN 023-320-005.
Thank you again, Steve Brandt. This request is a time extension for, as you said, for an approved tentative subdivision map. Daily Homes requested, and you approved this tentative map on August 13th, 2018. So it, the original, as you know, tentative maps have a two-year life before a final map needs to be approved. They have asked for one, and you've granted one one-year extension previously, so that brought the expiration to August 2021. They did apply for another extension before the expiration date. And so this, if you approve this, this would extend the expiration to August 13th, 2022. This tentative map had a mix of single and multifamily lots. There were 30 single-family lots with 30 single-family homes and 12 multifamily lots with 29 multifamily homes on them. The map, as the map shows, there's a remainder in the middle. They've been working to to develop that remainder as well, and you may, you may, they haven't formally, or they haven't finished their application yet, but you may be seeing an application to develop that area soon. So what what they've implied is that they're trying to combine it all into one development. So that's why they would like an extension at this time, so that they don't have to start, start this map, the development of it early, so. Staff is supportive of the extension and would recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Any any questions from the commission? Seeing none? All right, so this item is not officially a public hearing, but I'll open it up for the public for comment. Does anyone would like to to address this particular item? Further discussion? Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none? I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution number 2021-14, approving the one-year extension of time for tentative subdivision map number 2018-01, tract 793, and accompanying planning entitlements in accordance with the findings and conditions of the resolution.
Right. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Right, so I have a motion and a second. Mr. Kmet?
Hi.
Mr. Franklin?
Hi.
Mr. Burr?
Hi.
Mr. Adjigal?
Hi.
I vote aye as well. All right. Item seven, this item is a public hearing. So revisions to major site plan review number 2020-03. Amendment number one, a request by Basecamp Cannabis Company for revision to approved major site plan review for a seat-to-sail cannabis campus at Venture Place, west of Commerce Way, north of Enterprise Drive, east of South Route 41, and south route, and south of South Route 198 in the city of Lemoore, APNs 024-400-002 through 024-400-009.
Thank you, Steve Brandt. This is a revision to the site plan that you've seen before. This was reviewed at your June 2020 meeting. And the the revision before you right now is is a singular change. The the plan was originally approved with a perimeter block wall on three sides, the north, south, and and west sides of the site. What they're asking for is a change to that site plan approval so that they can instead install a chain-link fence with barbed wire. So the chain-link fence would be six feet tall, and then there'd be two additional feet of barbed wire above the fence for a total height of eight feet. That's the only change that's being requested. There's, we've talked to them about some other changes that they want to make. I know, I know if you've been out there, that they're they're currently under construction, but there's some changes they're considering. Those items aren't ready to bring to you yet, so they they may come back in the future. So right now, the only change before you is is the wall to the chain-link fence. So staff's recommended approval mainly because chain-link fence and barbed wire isn't allowed fence type in the industrial zone. It's not, there's a lot of zones where it's not allowed, but in the light industrial zone, it is, it is allowed to have this type of fencing, so we're recommending approval.
Right. Is there any questions or comments from the commission at this time?
Do they have a reason that they want to change from the block wall to the chain-link fence with barbed wire?
If you're asking about intent, maybe you could ask them. I mean, they've told us that it's change in preference.
Okay.
I'd imagine that some do have costs.
Probably.
Changing the type of fencing on an exterior of that type of entity, is that are there any repercussions in terms of like how the ordinance for for this type of business is set up? Is that allowed within that, or is there any parameters to find within that?
I, yeah, it's consistent with the with the city's project development agreement. Their requirement is to keep the site secure. So they have to have some type of fencing. This is how they're proposing to do that.
And there's nothing over there that already has block walls anyways, right? Everything's pretty much chain-linked currently?
I cannot think of another industrial site out there that uses block walls. I might be missing one, but I can't think of any.
All right, thank you. Okay, so this item is up for public hearing, so I will open it to the public for comment at 7:26. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this particular item?
Frank Custodial, Gary Burrows', south neighbor to said project. I guess the fence would be appropriate if the company were to maintain a status and a protocol that would be in line with every other city's building codes. Period. In other words, we've complained for a long time. I could throw a stink about the fence. They gotta use my fence. Hell, they get 780 free fe, feet of free fence from me. And yet I got problems. Problems with the city manager, correlation to that project. I got problems with the non-compliance issues on that project. I got problems with, does it have a business license? Does it have city sewer? Does it have city water? Does it have the ability to maintain human beings? Shit, huh? Why don't you guys come out at seven o'clock in the morning? You especially. And understand what I say about skunks and sewers. Now, you can't but it'd be rather stupid of me not to explain this upfront after going through our very first grow that there is a definite smell and skunks, and that's weed. And I know weed, it's no big deal, it's just the way it is, right? But it isn't that way if it infringes on other people's personal property. That's when you start hearing stuff. And the poor planning that has become such as the whole area is going to become weed. Okay, fine. I'm just a little guy. That has business, has a piece of property that may not be able to sell it now. What's that mean? That means your planning commission didn't do a good enough job, or your planning department lies the town. And what could wipe out this great thing of taxable weed? It's called the federal government. If they approve everything, buy, buy your stuff. Right now, it's kind of like prohibition. So you have the ability to work those things in the city, and it's good for the money and everything in the city. But I would say the way it's going about, the way they're doing their business, I couldn't build what I do like that. There's no way. None whatsoever. I would challenge those guys. I care less about the eight-foot cyclone transprove the SOB, right? But the detriment to my facility that's going on by the approvals by your planning commissions, city councils, city managers, I'm just a small business, little one, okay? Here since 1940. Moved around, had city help, watched city deals like that project to my north. Okay? Let me name the Will's Project. Okay, remember that one? You do, right? Free giveaway, not enough money in it, and then they tried to bank on it. Okay? I'm tired of people using your property to bank on. My neighbor that has, I don't know, 36 doors? I think he sent a letter to Stewart, didn't he? Pretty heavy-hitting letter to Stewart. See, he wanted to buy some property and build more buildings. There was none available. Because we're gonna get a doghouse grill. Okay, so open our eyes, let them run their business, tell them how to get the stuff done, quit cutting the BS. It's his job to get it done. The ability to expand is, should be just cut right at the knees. I mean, the guy out there has full tenants. Every door's full and wanted to buy more property and build more buildings. And if I'm lying, he'll come in here and tell you I'm not lying. We have a pretty good relationship being neighbors, not so much with the other group. Okay? So I'm here to tell you guys, you guys need to look into stuff. You come out there in the morning, especially September and October. And like I say, it may not be these guys because they're supposed to be, if you look at your deal, they have to have filters, exhaust, and everything on their stuff, right? Running power and all that kind of stuff. They're legit plans and all that stuff. That's your, this is part of their agreement to code and stuff like that. But I'm not a code guy. But like I said, it hasn't been a good situation with us neighbors. So probably wouldn't have came down here, but it was time that the pimple got popped. In other words, you guys are expanding the marijuana grow in a circumference that may be larger than I may want to be around. That's up, that's no big deal, that's up to you guys. I just want to give you one person's opinion that has a company and 46 employees. That's what we do. So, anyway, I, you know, if the fence is cool with all that, matches all that, that's fine. I suggest you condition it to timeframes. If it's an operating business, how come the fence isn't up? How come the water's not on? How come the utilities aren't done? PG&E isn't got done? I'm not that guy. I'm not the general. I'm not that guy. But if I was building that spot, I damn sure find that guy and get that guy and say, hey, this is, here's the letter right here to this city manager so I can have some answers. Okay? And as we look forward and see who's doing a good job, it ain't hard, take a drive out there, see who's doing a good job. Like I say, your world doesn't get entangled till my detriment to sell the place comes into effect. And partner, that's what I believe is happening. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this particular item?
Yeah, good evening, Commissioner Jay Kelly from Basecamp Cannabis Company, Mr. Castillo's neighbor. I can only speak to our project and what we do. And confidence that everything we do and have done and will do in the city of Lemoore meets the Lemoore City Code for cannabis operations, and it meets state law for cannabis operations. Not one thing that is in state law or city law is not done on that property. To speak to the smell issues, the air that comes, we have all hard-sided greenhouses, they're buildings for all intents and purposes on that property. The air is filtered in and the air is filtered out. Whatever smell is outside of that building, those fans, they're, if it's, if it's human waste smell, that is going to get, as cars drive by, that's going to get moved around. If it's cannabis smell from the hundreds of acres of outdoor, half a mile down the road, I have no control over that. Zero. What I have control over is the smell that we generate, which is filtered, meaning it does not exit the building. I cannot control the smell that is outside of our building. And if there are issues for my neighbor about those hundreds of acres elsewhere, take those issues up with those owners and those businesses. Because everything that we do is what we said we were going to do in our development agreement. We have not deviated at all. There was an oversight in our initial submission that had a block wall all the way around. It makes no sense operationally nor financially to put a block wall all the way around. It was an oversight. Take responsibility for it. This is a singular issue hearing. That's the only issue before the commission, quite frankly, is whether or not we can replace a block wall with barbed wire on top with a chain-link fence with site barriers with chain-link fence. The same thing that was approved for site barriers, barbed wire on top. And if public safety is protected with hundreds of acres of cannabis, with a chain-link fence with site barriers and barbed wire, it's, public safety is certainly protected in an industrial park with the same fencing. I'm more than happy to address any issues or any questions that you may have about our operation in general. But I take issue to it because I'm there from six in the morning until seven at night, seven days a week, literally, seven days a week for 12 to 14 hours every single day. And so I know what goes on and what doesn't go on. And every single thing that is done on that property is what's allowed in the city ordinance and by state law. There is not one deviation. And I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
So is there anyone else from the public that would like to address this item? All right, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing at 7:37. And bring it back to the commission. Any questions, comments?
I guess one of my concerns would be if they're going to put, so the existing fences that are there, you guys are asking for a six-foot fence with an eight, or with a two-foot razor wire on top, right? So are the fences that currently exist like on the back, on the side of his property and other neighbors, are they six-foot currently, or are you guys going to build a fence butted up against it?
We would do either or. It makes a whole lot more sense for security on both sides of that fence, which is what our security consultants have told us, to simply go above what's already there rather than to go six feet plus because then they have, anybody coming in has the ability to use that other side of the fence to get up higher. But either or.
That makes sense. I guess, I guess the only concern I would have is if you put two fences right next to each other, you're going to have overgrowth, you're going to have trash buildup. I would want it to be one fence. You know, if a new fence has to be put in all the way around, then I would want, I would personally, I would want it to be one fence. One fence all the way around the property.
Yes, or likewise, if the only, the only stretch of the property or the only side of the property is what borders 41, and I don't believe we have that option with Caltrans, I think we have to do a separate fence by state law. Mr. Guy probably knows better than I do.
Yeah, because it's highway, it's, yeah.
Any other questions, concerns? I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-Tact 15, approving the revision to Major Site Plan Review Number 2020-Tact 03, Amendment Number One, in accordance with the findings and conditions in the resolution.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Mr. Franklin?
Aye.
Mr. Etchegol?
Aye.
Mr. Burr?
Aye.
Mr. Clint?
Aye.
I will as well. Motion passes. Okay, and moving into item eight, public hearing. A lot of these tonight. So Major Site Plan Review Number 2021-06, a request by Master Storage 65, Richard Terojin, to expand the existing mini storage facility. The site is 3.67 acres and is located at the southeast corner of Iona and Commerce Way, APNs 024-051-012 and 024-051-013.
Thank you. This is a site plan review, major site plan review for expansion of the mini storage, as you said. The planning commission reviewed and approved a different version of this site plan at your March 2020 Planning Commission meeting. The applicant has since come back, made some probably minor revisions. One of the, one of the issues though is there's, there's two properties on the site. The existing facility is on one parcel, and then the area that's currently vacant is a separate parcel. Originally, they planned to combine those parcels with a law and adjustment, but now they're, for whatever reasons, the plans have changed. And so they're, they're two separate parcels. And that, the reason why I bring that up is one of, one of the issues that we have with the site plan is we want, we want to make sure that there's adequate emergency vehicle access to the site. The existing facility has, has two ways for fire vehicles to get in, the main entrance, and then there's an emergency entrance at the northeast corner of the site on, both of those on Iona. The new, the new or the expanded area would have an additional or a new main entrance on Iona, and then another secondary or emergency entrance at the southwest corner. Because there's two, there's technically two sites, we're recommending that, that all four sites be made available or remain available for emergency access. The, the site plan was proposing to close the site, the edge, the emergency exits at the southeast cor, or the, sorry, the northeast corner. So, so I wanted to point that out because that is one, one difference that staff's recommending from the site plan. Everything else, we've worked with the applicant and, and they've been accommodating on getting the drive aisle location, drive aisle widths appropriate, there's enough parking. And, and we think that the facility that has the offices for lease would be a good addition to the industrial park. So we're recommending approval of the site plan with the conditions that are shown in your staff report and resolution.
Any questions or comments from the commission? All right, so seeing none, so being that this item is as well.
Excuse me, I do. Is it 24 hours access?
Oh, I'm not sure. You can maybe ask the applicant. Do you think you know?
Yeah, if you have a gate.
You can get it with a code.
That's my next question is, each renter going to have their own gate code, right?
To get in, yes.
To get in.
Yeah, if you open a public hearing, maybe the applicant can answer some of the questions.
All right, so being that this item is under public hearing, I'll open the public hearing up at 7:44.
Hi, I'm Richard Terojin, and I'm one of the owners. And so we have a flagship facility that we built in Madera, and so we're going to bring many of those features in. So what's really unique about it is we have a smartphone app that actually works not just the gate, but each individual unit as well. So we control that, we control when they come in and when they go out. It also tells how often they stay there and how late they stay there, and what the duration of time is that they stay there. So if they abuse it, then we'll stop it so we can automatically shut that off. We've been very successful for two years in Madera utilizing that feature.
Thank you for the information.
We headed up booklets, I think, that provides you with all the amenities which we had presented before. But it's pretty exciting. We're going to take the existing facility and actually incorporate all those same features. So we're actually doing a nice base look for that, that side of the property as well. So it'll act as one. The reason why we chose to keep it as two separate parcels is because the original property, after we talked to the assessor at Kings County, we wanted to keep our tax base the same for the original site. And so we didn't want to have it reevaluated because it would be a substantial increase. And so in order to protect us from that, we had to keep them separate parcels. So we made a covenant that we are signing that will attach on to the properties that will keep it as one so we can't do anything without one selling. It can't sell individually, it has to sell as a, as a unit together. Which, which is why, the main reason we wanted to shut off the other exit on the far end. And that exit has always been somewhat of a problem for us anyway. So we're trying to keep that security for that part of the property. So that was originally why we wanted to close off the one to the far top right.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, I will close this public hearing at 7:47. And bring it back to the commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All right, I'll entertain a motion at this time on this item.
Mr. Chair, if there's no more other questions from my fellow commissioners, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2021-16, approving Major Site Plan Review Number 2021-06 in accordance with the findings and conditions in the resolution.
All right, so there's motions, there are a second?
I'll second that motion.
So I have a motion and a second. Mr. Clint?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin?
Aye.
Mr. Burr?
Aye.
Mr. Etchegol?
Aye.
I will as well. All right, the last public hearing item for the night. Okay, so item nine, this also is a public hearing, finding of consistency in pre-zoning. General Plan Amendment Number 2021-02, pre-zoning Number 2021-02, annexation Number 2021-02, caseca and sphere of influence amendment, a request by Peoples Properties LLC, Frank Kavanaugh, agent, to amend the general plan to designate an undesignated site containing approximately 222 acres with the land use designation of agricultural. Pre-zone the site Agricultural AG and find the annexation to the city of Lemoore and sphere of influence amendment are consistent with the general plan. The site is located on the southeast corner of 19th and Idaho Avenues, -0, oh, I'm sorry, 024-080-063.
Oh, I'm glad that took you while because I couldn't find the right page here, so.
I was looking out for you.
Thank you. All right, so this, this request is, as you said, a general plan amendment, pre-zoning and finding for annexation as well as a sphere of influence amendment. So might be good just to go straight to the map on this one so we can look at that. So, so let me, this area is currently outside of our general plan, planned area. It is south of, it is adjacent to the general plan area on the west property line and the north property line, but itself is not within our current general plan. So that's the reason for the general plan amendment and the sphere of influence amendment consistency is to, to, in order to recommend approval of the annexation, you'd have to, have to amend the general plan to bring it in to the general plan. So it currently doesn't have a general plan land use designation. Because the intent of the applicant is to do this for cannabis cultivation, that's considered an agricultural use in the, in zoning parlance. We're recommending that this be brought in as with a general plan designation of agriculture or agricultural. That's not a designation that we use very often. It is in, it is available in the general plan, but we don't have very many sites that are designated agricultural. One of the reasons why this makes sense as the right general plan designation is because if we were to bring it in as industrial, like the neighbors to the west and the, and the north, then we would have to do, then that's basically an expansion of our industrial park. park. It would require a lot more analysis, a lot more review of, you know, streets and roads and availability of sewers, things like that. And that's not really what the intended use for the site is. So, it's, it's an interesting planning case, as a number of things have, have come up over the years with cannabis, in that the, the main reason where, that we would be annexing this is not to allow development, but to allow farming, because this type of farming isn't allowed in the county. So, so we, we think that the agricultural designation is the right way to handle this, because it would not allow, if, if they, if cannabis were to go away, somebody couldn't go build a factory or an industrial park there, because it would still be zoned agricultural. And if somebody wanted to change the zone years from now, then we can do the analysis then, when they have a project before them. So, so what we're asking you to review and make a recommendation for to the city council, because they'll have the final decision, is to, is to designate the land agricultural, which brings it into the general plan, do a pre-zoning of AG, also agricultural, I will limit the uses to only agricultural uses, and then make a finding that with those changes, that the annexation and the sphere of influence amendment would be consistent with the general plan. So this is kind of a unique one, so again, if you have questions, be happy to answer them.
Well, also just for clarification, it's, it's very specific, like this is not about what's gonna come in here or not, it's more, more of a broad stroke in terms of, we want to zone this for agriculture.
Yes.
And that, that's it, like if someone wanted to come in at some point and grow peaches or, or whatever, right?
They'd still be allowed to do that.
Yeah, yeah, it's merely just to look at, to zone it for this specific, or this.
Yeah, the agricultural zone is, is the most limiting zone we have, because you can't really build anything except maybe a house on the site. What was I gonna, there was something to say, but, oh, just so you should know, and this is a state law requirement, is once you do zone a property and annex it, the city's not allowed to change that zoning for two years. So, so it's another way of, of just showing that this is going to stay agriculture, it's not gonna be, it's not a backdoor way of expanding the industrial park.
I have a question, Steve.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's zone ag, and like, like you said, they can grow whatever they want, if they want to grow cannabis, is that a, a separate conditional use permit for that, since it's agriculture?
That would be, it's not a conditional use permit that you would see, but the city council has to approve the, the project development agreement, yes.
Okay.
So, if that land gets annexed, and it's city land, then are we responsible for water and power and, because I mean, I'm assuming cannabis probably consumes a fair amount of water?
We're, that would, we would only, we're not responsible for providing the city services the way that we would if we were zoning it industrial. That said, the, I think the applicant is working with the city on potentially getting some of their water from the city, and that would, that's something that they're working out through the project development agreement. And that's, again, that was, but that's a, that's a good question, because it goes back to my point of, if we were zoning it industrial, we would need to show you a lot more that we have the ability to bring water and sewer, and, and with, by limiting the use to agriculture, then we're not, then that, those uses won't require the same type of city services.
Well, I guess, I guess it's just because it's agriculture, most people out there, they're running their own, they're, they're either, well, right now, they're running their own well, there, there is no.
Yeah.
There is no ditch water, but if they come in and they're in city, if we become responsible to provide them water, because they don't have to run a well, because it's city, what's within city.
We're not, I, I guess the way I would say it is we're not obligated to provide water to an agricultural use, but we can, we can negotiate to provide it if, if the city council so chooses.
Steve, as far as any odor issues, has that been looked at?
Well, I know that's been coming up, and I think it's something to consider, because of the, the acreages are, are growing. One of the things we did look, did note is that, you know, prevailing winds would be moving, moving away from the city proper, so there's a benefit there. But, that, that's about the extent of what we've looked at.
With that size of property, you don't see any future issues with odor coming into the city?
It's, it's hard, it's hard to say. It's, I mean, it's an agricultural use, like other agricultural uses.
It'd have to drown out the sewer and the tomato plant first, for me. Of course, they don't run tomatoes no more.
All right, any other further questions or comments? All right, so being as this item is under public hearing, I will open the public hearing up at 7:57. So is there anyone from the public who would like to address this particular item?
So, in answer to Bob's question about smell, a definite smell runs throughout an office of 27,000 square feet, all the way into the secretary's office. So if that's what you want to know, that's the answer, factual, come visit. There is no answer to the smell. Crop produces a smell. My neighbors may, may think they do everything right and all that, and you approved only one fence, guess who has the other fence? I don't think you can get too mad at me. You guys gotta look at some of this stuff. It's all about money, I can understand that. I can understand why capitalism works, I get it, I love it, and it works. It's whether we want to depend on that type of funding for the rest of the city and stuff like that. We've invested heavily in creameries, we got creamery scro- smells, we got sewer smells. We haven't had a weed situation like this. I would say this, I wouldn't be here if that guy did a good job, period. I am so pissed off, I'd usually be sleeping on a couch. I told him to approve the fence, he's too damn pissed at me to listen, right? I told you guys to approve the fence. But this other deal, you're starting to end up getting into big deals now, okay? I, I, I would be surprised that you wouldn't request what was going on in Ventura County as far as lawsuits and subdivisions. I hit it on the head. That can be the same thing as businesses and/or properties. So if the value, their, their values, hey, should buy me out, shut me up. But realize what we do also. So as you realize what we do, you'll say, oh, okay, that'd be like telling La Prino to go stick it up there, because they, you know, no, we want to make things, we're, we want to make the cannabis work, so how do you make it work? Not by just throwing it up. What was done prior and what's going on with this is a rush to judgment. Personally, I think that that group probably does the best job, the one, the one that expands here, it's Peoples', right? I think they probably do the cleanest job by far. But if you had to live and, and have a business where I'd have my business and gone through some of the things that I've gone through, I've had a lawyer on a text with their lawyer with this guy, no games, huh? It's real stuff out there. You guys need to go out there, first thing in the morning, seven o'clock on a dewy morning, smell the skunk. It's there, simple as that. If that's okay, you guys vote yes. If it's not, then you vote no. I mean, that's all it is, it's like that. And, in another note, he didn't tell you, but that's probably five liquor licenses on that freeway exit, in your earlier discussion. Five. Five spots you can buy liquor, all right there.
All right, anybody else from the public? Seeing none? Okay, I'll close the public comment at 8:02, and bring the item back for discussion amongst the commission.
Just looking at this whole, whole thing, I don't have a problem with annexing this in for agriculture, but the problem I have is that if cannabis, if they decide to grow cannabis on this property, that it doesn't come to us, but at least it does go to city council, but I do have a problem with the fact that I don't have a say so after this. That's all I've got to say about it.
I guess the other question I have is, so when we did the other part, we annexed the other part over, I guess it would be this side of the sewage plant, was that 19th and Vine and Idaho, but on the north side of Idaho, this is on the south side. So when we annexed the north side, what did we annex it as?
Uh, that was, excuse me, that was pre-zoned light industrial.
Oh, it was already set that way?
Yeah, because that was already in the general plan for, as being part of the industrial park.
Oh, okay, that's, that's why I didn't understand why that one already was in this one.
And that annexation actually hasn't gone to council yet, the, both projects are actually going to council on October 5th.
All right, any other questions, comments? If there's none, I'll entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, move to adopt Resolution Number 2021 Tag 17, recommending approval of general plan amendment Number 2021 Tag 02, pre-zoning Number 2021 Tag 02, and find annexation Number 2021 Tag 02 and sphere of influence amendment to be consistent with the general plan in accordance with the resolution.
All right, so there's a motion, is there a second? motion has died. Any other further discussion regarding this item?
Mr. Vice Chair, this item is up, it's a recommendation from the commission. If the commission wants to entertain a motion to recommend against what is proposed, then that recommendation would be forwarded up to the city council. If you're unable to come to a decision regarding a opposed recommendation, then nothing will be advanced to the, to the council on this particular application. So I would suggest you entertain a motion and, a motion regarding a recommendation of opposition.
All right, at this time, is there a motion for, to recommend opposition for this item?
I'll, I'll make a motion to recommend opposition on Resolution Number, make sure I'm on the right one here, 21, 2021-17, with the general plan amendment 2021-02, pre-zoning 21, 2021-02, for the annexation 2021-02.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Stop a motion in a second?
Mr. Chair, before a vote is taken, I believe Mr. Olson wanted to make some comments to the commission, and I'll also point out that in support of your, in support of the recommendation in opposition, if the commission approves the motion on the table, you will want to make findings in support of your recommendation against this proposal.
There's a couple of things real quick. One, Lemoore does have the ability to, to have cannabis, right? We passed that years ago. To date, I don't know if people are aware, but over $20 million has been invested in this community. And, and there's more coming, right? We're hoping to have more come. A big part of this is strategic, being south of the wastewater plant, because water south of that wastewater plant, it's not good for home. The homeowners always complain of the odors from the wastewater plant, so we kind of said, fine, we'll, we'll keep cannabis south of the freeway. The light industrial, that cannabis could grow in north of the college, we put that off limits for odor concerns. Odor, you're gonna have odor off the crop about three weeks before they harvest it, that's when the flowers are booming, so it's a, it's a three to four week, you will have some odors the course of the year, every time they harvest. Hopefully you'll get three turns out of these crops, so you're looking at about nine weeks out of 52 where you're gonna have odors. Additionally, it's strategic, because we're working with the state to get tertiary water from our wastewater plant to reuse, reduce and recycle our water. Well, we can get over a million, we're getting real close to gain approval for the farmlands they currently have, and as a strategic partner with La Prino Foods, we're going back to the state to try to get some additional water out there for capacity for the city and for La Prino, and this is a perfect opportunity for us to have a good, reliable land that the city doesn't have to go out and spend millions of dollars investing to get rid of excess wastewater. So, there, there's, there's a lot of moving parts, it's not just about cannabis, but right now cannabis is driving our economy. Nobody's breaking down our doors to come here and do business, with the exception of we still have Helena coming in, we're still working with CWX, but they're a chicken composting and biogas generator. There's people that are worried about their odors, even though they're completely self-contained. So, these boats on south of town has, back in the numbers, over probably a $50 million impact to what could, would be coming in here as far as future business and future dollars into our economy. So you're aware of that. I got nobody else beating down the door for, for landing in Lemoore for, for anything else. Thank you.
So currently, there's a motion on the table regarding a recommendation of proposition. I had a motion and a second. So, Commissioner Hachigo made the motion, so, Commissioner Hachigo?
Aye.
And, the second came from Commissioner Burr, Commissioner Burr?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin?
Aye.
Mr. Franklin?
Am I still saying aye, even though I voted to, for to go?
No, you voted aye, everyone.
And, and aye vote would be a vote to recommend denial.
Then, then negative.
I don't know as well. So we have three to two, so the motion of opposition passes.
So just to clarify, who would say it first? So this will still go to the city council, and it will go with your recommendation to them, and we'll, we will represent that to the council.
All right, moving on to item number 10, Director's Report, Mr. Olson?
Not much to report out tonight, other than we, Ms. Howell is no longer with the, with the city of Lemoore, so we're working this week with QK and staff to come up with a path forward. In the interim, I'll be a point of contact, need to get somebody in, community
In the interim, I'll be a point of contact, need to get somebody in community development, or Christie is still helping us out, but she has accepted a promotion to another role in Public Works as the management analyst, so we can congratulate Christie on that, but she will be around helping us in our transition. We've already started the process of replacing Christie's position, and again, we're working on the steps moving forward on the overall department, how we're going to approach that in the near future. Thank you.
And item 11, Commission.
Next month, the only thing right now that we have on the agenda coming forth is more than likely going to be raise lemonade. They're a lemon infused lemonade bottler going out in the industrial park. Thank you.
Nate, Nathan, real quick, are you still planning on building another tank, water tank, in the west side?
Yes, it's already been ordered.
All right, item 11, Commission reports or requests. Anyone on the commissioners have an item they'd like to report, or something that they'd like to request for future meetings?
I just want to congratulate Christie for her promotion, and thank you, Mr. Custodio, for coming out here tonight, I appreciate it. Same here.
I think it's fair to say that we, that all of us on the commission echo those sentiments, the big ups to Christie on her promotion, and really appreciate what you do, and really excited for you getting promoted, that's always good, when you see good work get noticed and get to move up. And then also, Mr. Custodio, one of the hardest things is being able to make decisions based off what, when there's two points of view. And when there's discrepancy, it makes the decision really, really difficult. And so really appreciate the opposed perspective, you know, to be able to see what the impacts are for other people who aren't maybe necessarily staff, or developers, or the investors that are with that particular item. So really appreciate that, and thank you for coming out and sharing your perspective on those items.
All right, and so, item 12, the adjournment, I will call this meeting adjourned at 8:14 PM.